I'd like to call the board of the regular meeting of the Illinois Village Board for October twenty eighth. If you please rise and take your questions.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray. Holston.
Present.
Horn. Here. Pop.
Here.
And Raisik.
Present.
Good, thank you. Mr. Gray, have a little more than any vacation. See you.
That is great. We give you thanks almighty God for the graces that you have given us. We come some, come from so many different places and activities tonight. Some of us may be exhausted after a long day's work and some are ready to go with enthusiasm. Some have worries and distractions that are never far from their minds. But each village official has come here to do the work of this village. It is a privilege to serve the people of Moni. So we ask you to allow your Holy Spirit to be present tonight to guide words, thoughts, and actions. May each piece, may each person speak up when there is something valuable to share and allow respectful silence while listening. Keep each mind open for all voices to be heard. Lord, we thank you for your presence here tonight. Please bless our leaders with wisdom in all of their decisions. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Thank you. At this point, I'll turn to open the public agenda items only. Uh, if you have something to tell me to do, anything that's on the agenda, come to the board and give, uh, look at accounts in about three minutes and give your name and address. Okay?
Mike Johnson, twenty-six oh forty-one South Linden. Uh, I've come here to talk about one of your agenda items here, the, uh, the, uh, special use and, uh, the variance, uh, for DNC. And, uh, I worked very hard myself to help get this to this point. And this is something that I feel will really benefit Moni. To the point where it could help bring other businesses into this community if they see something as fabulous as this, uh, new, uh, facility that's going to be going in. Thank you.
Thank you. With nobody else, uh, for, um, open the public under the agenda items, I'll move to approve the consent, or I'll entertain motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Horn.
Second.
Trustee Gonzalez. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
And Gonzalez.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next we have the court's report, the mayor's report, Mr. Mayor. Okay, thank you. Uh, have anything particularly on your mayor's report? Um, Mr. Batista, can you minister your report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the board's permission, I'd like to just move a few things out of, uh, out of order just for the second time. Uh, I'd like to ask Mr. Can if he would, if he can come forward and state us an update on the, uh...
Robert Brady. Don't care what it, don't be boring.
Mr. Mayor, trustees, village officials, ladies and gentlemen.
I'm sorry.
I'm very pleased to be here tonight to tell you that the building needs to post twelve hundred. And the Village of Moni Department Works, Public Works, have completed the initial, which is also the main phase of the Moni Veterans Memorial. We'll be enhancing the memorial as funds allow. We have eight memorial pavers right now to be installed. Jerry, Jerry Clark was doing these for us. We wrote, we found him in to be the closest one to help us with this project. So Jerry's got aid of the May, we have several on order. We hope to have these installed next week, so we'll be ready for Veterans Day. Much of the expense associated with the construction of the memorial came in the form of labor and materials, although some cash donations did come in. Our post gives thanks to the following businesses who helped with materials, labor, and or cash donations. JTR Heating, Air, Refrigeration, Landscaping Services Incorporated, Brian's Place, Dutch Valley Landscaping, the Village of Moni, Department of Public Works, and Legion members Rusty Kanaski, Jerry Curley, Ray Lachi, and yours truly. The memorial cost incurred by our post amounted to sixty-four hundred and seventy dollars. We did fall short in raising all the dollars needed, but only thirteen hundred and seventy dollars, which we are hoping the Village of Moni will reimburse us. This memorial project could not have been completed without the support of the trustees, the mayor, the Village of Moni, and the Village of Moni Public Works Department. They did a terrific job, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. We are very grateful. We hope to see several residents and village officials at the Veterans Day celebration and ceremonies on Wednesday, November eleventh at eleven o'clock. We're still taking donations up until Veterans Day. After November the eleventh, we hope to have a picture story done in the local newspapers. And once again, thank you so very much. And I just brought this to show that this is what Jerry's been doing for us. And, uh, we'll be putting him in next week. Got it, sit.
Okay. Ryan, what time is that, uh, event on the eleventh?
Eleven o'clock.
Eleven one.
Eleven one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I believe the board of the Public Affairs, well, spring, uh, March, yeah, probably March. Uh, the, the board agreed to, uh, help that if they fell short up to a certain dollar amount, I would put you under the usual for two. Does that exceed the amount that the board's previously agreed to? Yeah. So, um, once we get the final number from him and writing, I'll, I'll, uh, with the board's consent, we're going to have, uh, the, uh, the work list.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, next is, uh, a couple announcements. The Christmas party is scheduled for Saturday, December the twelfth. At Fireman's Park, it'll be from six P M. to nine P M. Uh, food will be provided. Food will be provided and we just asked that, uh, the staff and if any, uh, the officials would like to bring a dessert, their favorite desserts. Whatever recipes that you got, put them to work and, uh, and there'll be some awards that'll be given out that night as well. Uh, recently, we received a letter from Illinois Emergency Management Agency, uh, reference to NIT compliance. I sent a email out to the officials and to, uh, staff in order to keep our eligibility for federal funding in the event of a disaster, uh, the village is required to go through some online training. Uh, there's a link in the email, if you would, it's, uh, it's about a three-hour course. It is, will take some time, but, uh, there's a test at the end and a certificate will be given at the end of the, of the training. I'll need a copy of those and then return, I've had to fill out a report to send to IMA by the end of the year. So just to make you aware of that, uh, but that will help us to, uh, in the event of a disaster, uh, that makes us eligible for federal funding.
Uh, may I interrupt you something?
Yes, sir.
Which says, uh, I wonder, the understanding that, uh, for us to qualify for what you just mentioned, the grants or whatever it may be, we all have to participate.
That is, that is true, yes.
Very good.
It, uh, that, the course will give you an orientation to, uh, emergency response, what the, uh, what protocol is, what measures are going to place. Uh, as village officials, the, the part and role that you'll take as well. I did reach out to the board, in reference to our November and December, uh, board meetings. And with the board's consent, uh, we are going to change our schedule. Seeing that, uh, the end of the month, November and December, falls, uh, the board meetings follow just before Thanksgiving and just before Christmas. We're going to, uh, make it one meeting for November, and that'll be November the eighteenth. We're going to move it to the middle of the month. And then in December, one meeting, and it'll be December the sixteenth. It'll be the same time, six-thirty for both meetings. And then we'll resume our normal schedule for, uh, the January meeting, uh, for twenty sixteen.
Mr. Batista, for a full hour, I agree, we should probably, just to make a motion. I'll entertain a motion to approve, and this will give me the third Wednesday of both months.
Good, thank you.
So that was Pop and Raisik. And just as a wider talking point, there, the historically, the second meeting has been canceled in November or December just because of the counterfeits. It made more sense, I think, just to move to the middle to scramble both. If there's a need for a special meeting, it's essential that we'll, we'll help just to address the critical matters, so. Uh, we got a motion, we have a second, any other discussion? I'll, roll call, please.
Trustee Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
And Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Grchuski, if I could, uh, what's the formality for making sure that it's properly notified posted? Is it just putting it on the marquee, is it?
Marquee, Your Honor, and also we should notify the newspaper.
Okay, thank you.
And lastly, which is not on the agenda, just as an announcement, we received word today that IDOT and, uh, I believe University Park will have a ribbon-cutting ceremony, uh, for I fifty-seven in Stunkel Road, opening on Friday, October thirtieth. Uh, the time's to be announced, but at this time, they're, uh, saying late afternoon. And then a rain date would be Saturday, the thirty-first, and it'll be sometime in early morning. The, the time is to be announced.
The road will be open some, some time today.
Yes, that's right. And that's all I do, thank you.
Present. Under the officials' report, uh, Public Works, trustee Gray.
Uh, we're actually going to talk about something later, maybe insurance report, uh, other than that, no report.
Okay. Person, the rec, trustee Gonzalez.
Um, just about the Halloween happenings, just a reminder that, uh, yes, this year on October thirty-first, this coming Saturday is Halloween. And the trick-or-treat hours for the village is three to seven P M. But our Halloween happenings that the village puts on at Fireman's Park is from six to nine P M. So there'll be co- um, hospital, Halloween costume contests, trunk or treating, and prizes for all of those. There's, and there's free hot chocolate and hot dogs, um, until gone, I think, for the first fifteen fifty people. So please come out and join us for that. And if you have any other questions. And the one last thing, too, that Mary Jo had done, um, there are these signs available here in Village Hall to let kids know. I know that we have four full hours on a Saturday for trick-or-treating this year. If you wanted to grab one of these and put that in your window, so the kids know that they are welcome there, um, that would be fabulous. End of report.
Thank you. My next is trustee Horn.
Hello. A treasury report is due October thirty-one. Our report is actually done early and will be filed with the county tomorrow morning. Uh, finance department is also working on the village's levy. Tax levy ordinance must be passed and a certified copy filed with the county clerk on order before the last Tuesday in December. So I'm sure it'll be brought up before, uh, this board in the next few weeks. And flash, the state has still not passed a budget. That means, uh, some of our funding is, uh, we're not receiving that, but we are, uh, it's, that funding is not essential. I mean, it's important, but it is not, uh, uh, hindering the village from doing its, its normally scheduled duties of the village. End of report.
Business development, trustee Holston, please.
Uh, two things that Kevin Daly reported to me, one, the WLS radio people he's met with then. Uh, this next year, they're going to have some testimonial format and some of the ads are utilizing local Moni business people. And, uh, giving several examples of that, so that'll be good to hear. And the fifty-eight hundred industrial drive world kitchen facility is now under new ownership. And, uh, it is now one of the largest, if not the largest, building in the Chicagoland area that's available for sale. So there's a lot of people that are interested in that. Uh, he seems to be optimistic that we'll do something with that pretty soon. And then there are a couple of private things that are not yet, uh, disposable that are being worked on as well. End of report.
Great, thank you. Uh, if, if I could interject briefly. Has it been confirmed, uh, Mr. Daly, that, uh, one of the developments, a, a new business in town was as a result of the WLS? Cause I noticed the question didn't pass us, so thanks to that. Have you had a chance to confirm that?
That is correct.
So we have a new steel company in town as a result of the, that they heard of the WLS. That's good. This, give, give the technical, I guess. And, uh, building services and code enforcement with, uh, trustee Pop.
I had a memory for it, just a comment, if I may, uh, there was a lot of things going on in the building department, which I was unaware of. And as a trustee in that, I would, I would like to be more in the loop of knowing what's going on and not a real principal or anything, but, um, I don't like to hear things from other people that's going on in one of our departments. And I feel that as a department, I should, uh, be aware of. End of comment.
Always interesting, appreciate it. Public safety and police, trustee Raisik.
I got a few things. For Moni IMA, on October eighth, they did a training that was provided by IMA, by decreed IMA, covering mutual aid and radio communications. On October twenty-second, IMA team trained in map reading, compass reading, land navigation, and human tracking. And upcoming training on November fifth, in the reservoir, IMA's going to be, um, training in land navigation, human tracking, and search and rescue. They also added a new team member, a retired police officer slash licensed pilot.
Great.
And for police.
Uh, uh, trustee Raisik, their, the licensed pilot, that, that comes in handy with any potential for the search and rescue.
By air?
Yeah, whatever, things like that.
By airplane? I must have slipped through that one.
Actually, Scotty, he's actually one of the other IMA guys, is part of the public personnel. He's also, uh, is he actually a pilot also?
Sure, which I believe is, uh, yeah, he's a, uh, observer with, uh, similar control.
Okay, so we, we are creating a group that's mixed of our, our old team that started creating.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. And for police, earlier this month, Illinois Law Enforcement Torch Run was recognized for its two thousand fourteen fundraising efforts at the International L E T R Conference in Nassau, Bahamas. The Illinois L E T R received the inaugural titanium award of excellence and with the three point eighty-nine million dollars raised in two thousand fourteen, was deemed the second largest fundraising program in the world. Additionally, Illinois enjoyed the largest gross increase in fundraising within, an additional of five hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars raised from a year prior. Internationally, the torch run raised two million dollars more in two thousand fourteen. The Illinois program itself accounted for twenty-five percent of this worldwide increase. A huge thank you to everyone involved in the law enforcement torch run for the Special Olympics, Illinois. We are honored to have such a dedicated and passionate group leading us in our mission. As of, um, October fourteen, two thousand fifteen, the Moni Police Department is number twenty in the standings of the three hundred and twenty-seven fundraising agencies for two thousand fifteen, reaching a total of eighteen thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and thirty cents. That surpasses last year's total of thirteen thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-three cents.
That, that is, I, I gotta say, that's absolutely impressive. I mean, we're, we're better than the top ten percent and, uh, really admiring our second year of doing it. So chief, uh, which are huge accolades back to yourself and the rest of your team. And I like, I, I just love to plug you on this, but you know what? It is so neat to see when we have one of the people who are committed to helping out with IMA, which is not a, you know, environment or place doing the torch run and some of the different things like that. I'm, I'm always impressed to see how many of our employees are so committed to the community that is beyond the paycheck. They actually care and they, they step up and they do a number of things. And there's a lot of things, I know the police department, our guys, the gals are, are involved and doing a lot that we don't talk about because they like to be a little key. But, you know, when you hear what happened on the news and other communities and things like that, the public knew all the cool things that our officers are involved in helping and, um, just, you, 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 you know, the people, you, you know, the impressive, you know, the, and I don't agree with all of these, so. Trustee, report. Thank you, sir. All right, trustee Raisik, report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three items for the board's consideration. The first item is an ordinance approving a special use permit for advanced mobility. I believe Mr. uh, Bollman is here, sorry, Bachman is here tonight with his staff. A special hearing took place on October fifteenth before the zoning board, which, uh, sent a approval letter to the zone, to the full board for consideration. The special use permit is up tonight for a vote, Your Honor.
Mr. Bachman, I understand that, uh, you, you were some pretty good questions and comments at, at me.
Yeah, yeah.
Uncomfortable, I'm sure, uh, but it's just part of setting its own, so, you know, I, I think it's impressive. Despite of all the comments and everything else, the, uh, the planning board, uh, recognized the relevance of passing it through to us. Larry, would you just, for the public information, there's two items on here pertaining to them, one's a special use, uh, one is a variance. Could you please explain to the public what the differences are between the two, or, you know, the chief?
Uh, yes, sir. The special use permit, uh, there were findings made by the zoning board, uh, under section eleven, chapter two, section nine E, where the applicant had approved to the zoning board, there, it's necessary to allow, I believe he's asking for, uh, outside storage at this facility. Uh, the zoning board had a public hearing, uh, the, uh, adjoining landlords were notified about the request. I do not believe there was any objection to the same. And the special use permit is needed when you have outside stores like this gentleman's going to proceed with. This is standard for if someone is looking for outside stores pursuant to the zoning, uh, ordinance, the applicant has to come in, make the application, which they did, and the zoning board will take it into consideration. So this one deals with, uh, outside storage, as the mayor alluded to, the variance, which is next on the agenda. The variance is, uh, it shows an undue hardship. The applicant, again, goes through the same process. The zoning board meets, the adjoining landlords are notified, and that situation, they're asking the building line to be moved, uh, which is standard procedure if the applicant can show undue hardship and that applicant did not create the undue hardship, which the applicant met on both occasions. So the zoning board made a favorable recommendation for the full board to give its consideration.
And, and I want to clarify here, uh, Mr. Daly, if you, if you could, I know you were in the planning meeting as well, but, um, going to the first item that we're going to vote on, the special use, that's tied specifically to the business licensing itself. And the location of that, is it, uh, just to clarify, Larry, uh, it's specific to that furthest back building property? Uh, it's, it's not to, if you turn it down originally, right now, you can see some of your.
Hamlet Parkway. Right.
All the way back.
From the back. We have, we have, we have.
Yeah, if you want to come up and just kind of walk it, show around and break, just so everybody, uh, fully understand what, what the village is.
Right, this one's for Illinois Tech Engineering, and we were, uh, contracted by, uh, Advanced Mobility to come up with a site plan. But this is, the, this is lot four and five that are on the far east side of the Hamlet Parkway industrial site. So this proposed, this would be the proposed storage lot right here for their, um, for their trucks that they do the work on. So they're, they're, uh, like more semi-stalls.
So it'd just be like one area that'd be definitely added on the drawing there that would be what's.
Yeah, yeah, because we came and talked to the, it's, yeah.
I, I, I just want to make sure everybody understands, it's not, it's not free for all, it's not free for all in the front lots and everything else. This is all tied to that one segment.
This, this is the.
I think there's some public concern before, even during the, what currently is taking place in the front building, is it actually getting relocated?
Yes, that's why we're doing it.
And if you could just turn it around so, um, our, our cameraman will.
This is the existing building right here. And this would be the, the, uh, parking lot improvements.
There's special uses pertaining to that. And that's tied to the business license itself, it's tied to the operational of that business.
That's right.
So if there, that business were to close or whatever else, another area for, for parking, or, 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 material to be, to, to.
Yes, sir, that they indicated, um, this is a section two.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, special use permit is that transferable to a third party, above prior written, uh, approval by the local person.
And I believe, I see the motion is in the back of the room, I believe that's adjacent to your property as well, and you didn't have any issue with that.
No. May I make a comment about this?
Yeah, please, because I was at the P and D meeting, and, uh, I must say that the company there is going to double, it's, it's doubling in size. You're growing by leaps and bounds, am I correct, that you are the only one in the country that does what you do?
Yeah, we're the, we're, it's one other small company, but for the vast majority, yeah, we're the only.
You're going from, was it thirty employees to sixty, or?
Uh, we had twenty-two on our shop floor a year ago and we're at about fifty-three now, on our shop floor alone.
And to keep yourself growing, you're renting a space in University Park until this is completed?
Correct, we signed a lease and we're moving into University Park on a three-year lease, so we can work together if this facility completed.
Even more growth at, at the rate you're.
Oh, yeah, that's the plan.
Which is, uh, good for the village of Moni.
That's the plan, that's the foot of building.
It's also going to clean up that area quite a lot.
Absolutely. What we're trying to do.
That was a big hit for me.
Well, people don't realize that, that this is, and this is another kind of a neat point here. I, I met with you, uh, about a year ago, you know, walked through again, and, uh, at that time, you were shipping off all of your, uh, products, if you will, to Tel Aviv, I think it was.
That is, really, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's international sales camaraderie of Moni, so that's pretty cool, so. All right, so, uh, we've got the presentation, uh, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Move. Second.
Holston and Raisik. And then, any discussion? I need a ordinance number, I believe, correct, Larry.
Yes, sir.
Seventeen thirty-three.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
And Holston.
Yes.
And moving on to the variance, we're chancing to do with the property lines setback. Uh, again, all this has been approved by the planning authority with the advisory to send it to us. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve that as well.
Make the motion.
Second.
Gray and Raisik. Roll call, please.
Trustee Pop.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes, what ordinance, number seventeen thirty-four?
Yes.
Uh, Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
And Horn.
Yes.
And, Mr. Grchuski.
Thank you, Mayor. And the last item for the board's consideration, we have an IDOT resolution that, uh, we're seeking permission for the mayor to sign off to sum of thirty-five thousand, eight forty-four. This has got to be passed in order so we can use motor fuel tax funds, uh, and it's got to be sent down to IDOT for their approval, but we need the mayor to sign permission.
And that's the, my rock salt for those.
I, I believe so, yes.
I believe that's the same thing we do every year, isn't it?
Four thousand one hundred and eighty, it's just, yeah.
Yes, motion.
The special move, have we been getting more fuel tax money from this state?
Uh, no, we still have money, okay, we, we're. Okay, we, where's Daryl?
That's all I have money, and we're not getting any money from the state. I know you have my salt, but.
Okay, you wanna. Mr. Bullner, I believe we still have money that has been in our funds that are committed through NFT. We have to make the legal authorization for those funds to be transferred for that purpose. So we've got money that's due us, no question about it, but we also have money that we haven't necessarily spent entirely because we've been paying out of general fund or whatever like that. So the idea is to make sure that we spend the money out of NFT that's legally able to be allocated from there.
Yes, sir.
And is that a resolution number, is what we've been looking for?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, so trustee Holston gave me a motion, I don't have a second.
A second.
Gray?
Who did the motion, please?
Uh, Holston and Gray. And this will be a resolution.
2015-10.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
And Pop?
Yes.
Trustee Gray, I assume that was your item, if you were referring to. Anything else?
There's all, yeah.
Uh, anything other than. New business?
I have a light of mayor for media. Congratulations to our lawyer, Zuzki, he's now a grandpa.
I just, no.
Sorry, I made the face so.
Yeah, it happens.
We'll go on to open the public's. I'm sure, I'm sure.
Yeah, I have, I have two items too. Just really quickly, I wanted to let everybody know, and I need to get this out on the sign and the public signs too, that the Moni Women's Club Vendor Fair and Showcase is a week from this Saturday, November 7th, here at Village Hall, and we are completely full. We open it up to only, first, you know, the women's club members, and then ladies in Moni who have a home-based business or direct sales company, and every stall, every table is filled. So I knew we had a lot of stuff available in this town, and so I ask you all to come and support them, see what we have to offer, the ladies, you know, have to offer, it's from 10:00 to 2:00, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Saturday, November 7th. So I urge you to please come, there's raffles and all kinds of things going on. And the second one is a little more contentious, shall we say, is about our school board, CM 201U. I ask you all, please, to watch our local Crete Moni School District, 201U. We pay 70% of their budget out of our taxes. It's in a sad state of affairs, and I can't even go into what happened at the last meeting, but our village budget, budget is a little over $9 million. That school budget is over $62 million of our money that these people are responsible for. We need to watch them and make sure that they're doing what we need them to be doing. And right now, it's not being done, I assure you. So I, uh, third Tuesday of every month are the school board meetings, 6:30 at Crete Moni High School. So please make it a point of, they are, um, you can get them on YouTube and the Crete Moni School District site as well. If you're really quick, you can watch the unedited version.
Everybody should be aware of the fact that, you know, we've had our issues here at times. We were thrown, we know we're a team, we know we're all committed to the same purposes. And even though we are all very passionate, we all know we're on the same team. We're all committed to our community as a whole. I, I, I don't know that we've ever resorted to name calling or anything else that I've seen, that's been an embarrassment to another units of government. I'm very proud to be a part of this organization right here with the rest of you. And the school district itself is a concern that we should all take note of. And that's whether you have children in the school or not. It's a financial responsibility issue as well, it's not just the academics of the next generation and all that sort of thing, it's, there's a lot more to it. And should, should weigh very seriously on, on all of us, our concerns regarding that. And you would try to figure out how they're gonna fund some things, and, Daryl, I don't know, have you had a chance to review their strategy for what they're talking about doing, because they were trying to make it seem like it wasn't gonna cost anything extra for them to borrow tons more money? And I don't quite understand how.
They're looking to, to.
Daryl, do you wanna come up?
Just, well.
Well, I just wanted to just make the comment, I didn't mean a whole diet type of start in it, but just know that we all need to be watching it every single month, and to know that it does, it is, it does take a village to run the schools and to raise these kids, because it affects our village directly too. Because the first time a business wants to come in, the first time somebody wants to move here, we get asked, tell me about the schools. And I have never had any problems with any of the teachers and the administrators and the love that they have and the great education that they are getting, but the way the business of that district is being run, we need to watch.
Larry, may I ask for the public's sake too, what time is the meeting and what school?
I said it, it's at Crete Moni High School, third Tuesday of the month, every month, 6:30 p.m. starts the public comment. And if you wanna make, you know, a public comment, you get your three minutes, and you have to be there to fill out a form ahead of time. And then the business portion of the meeting starts at 7:00.
Daryl, did you, I, I, you, if you have something to put on there, if you prefer, that's fine, but if you've got some perspective on.
Well, I, I have been following in, and some of the things that, that I know that they've been trying to do, I, you know, I'll speak to anyone that, that wants to speak about it.
And they would be advised after saying you think of.
I, I just, we should all be aware of that, thank you.
I have something else.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, just making an announcement, anybody see, Little Free Library is out in front of Village Hall. It's a free book exchange program, there's a little one, there's a shorter one for the kids' books, and a taller one for the adults' books. You can go out there, grab a book, grab all the books you want, you can grab colored books, read them, bring it back, if you like the book, you can keep it. If you have other books at home that you wanna share with other people, you can put those in there as well. It's, it's a great little program to basically promote reading.
Yeah, it was, it was a great idea, and I know you work with the Girl Scouts also, and you helped decorate the, the.
Yeah, DJ got his, uh, girls, girls got shirts to paint on, and, uh, the kids' library board last year, and a year later, finally it.
Good. Adds a little less flavor, color out of the. Anybody else want to open the public? I started to, and that, this has kind of been that in what I was, uh.
I wanna be sure I can be heard. Jackie Hurling, 25620, Shell Creek Drive. Since I've missed a couple of meetings, I've had the opportunity to try to watch them. It's very difficult. There are people whose voices do come through, and there are people whose voices do not come through. And it sounds like you're mumbling, and I had the opportunity to witness a little bit of that tonight. I know Larry's very soft-spoken, but, oh, he came through loud and clear tonight. He probably saw me in the background like. But anyway, sometimes you're almost talking to each other and forgetting that it's a public meeting and that people need to be able to hear what is said. So that, that is my recommendation that, and I know, mayor, you're one of the soft-spoken ones, that you can hear very well. So maybe you need to hold the microphone or something, like we say in our meetings, eat it.
Well, the last meeting, I didn't have a voice at all.
Well, but tonight, even tonight, sitting back there, sitting in the room, it's very difficult to hear.
We didn't maybe get some.
Even, even Ruben tonight was difficult to hear. So if, if you're gonna put it out for publication, people ought to be able to, to hear it. And that's not just coming from me, I had heard this a lot before, but, cause I'm always sitting here, I kinda know and know what's going on. But it is hard, very, very difficult, um, on, on YouTube as well, and WPAF, my comments for the.
Thank you. Thank you. Here, anybody else? Anybody else? All right, Larry, do you have anything for executive session tonight?
No, sir.
I'm sorry, is that better, Jackie?
Yes, much better.
I don't know why they put such a short stick on here, I mean.
It's a little far away, too.
Get a book.
You know, there's a nice little People's Library thing out here. All right, with nothing under executive session, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, but the time is now 7:16.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes. Yes.
Now, you can go home and watch the rest of the presidential debate, or the debates, or.
Jackie.